Okay, thank you Steve. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. It's four o'clock in the afternoon. We'll call this meeting to order. If we can have a roll call, Mr. Baptiste. Mr. Schultz.
I'm here.
Ken, did you say Mike was just getting settled?
Yes, that's right. He's at the station. He's having trouble logging in.
Okay, I'll put him at the bottom of the list. Ms. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Corbett. Don't see Mr. Corbett. Is he with us tonight?
I don't see him on the list.
Okay. And myself, Mike King. I'm pretty sure I'm here, but I'll double check. You can just bear with us a second so we can get Mike settled so that we can get started. While we're waiting for Mike Baptiste to get settled in, for those folks that are here for the definitive subdivision plans 45-21 and 46-21, 370 County Road and 1-13 North Carver Road. Both applicants have requested a continuance.
I'm here, Michael.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Good.
So, as I was saying, 45-21 definitive subdivision plan for 370 County Road, Intro Energy LLC. Care of Prime Engineering, MAP 6465, lots 1,006, 1,008, 1,009, 1010, and 1,000A, 1,000B, and 1001 has requested a continuance to... Is it our next meeting, Ken?
No, it's March 28th is the next meeting they want. They're 30 days out.
March 28th.
Yeah.
Okay, so they've requested until March 28th, so we'll dispatch that so that people that are here don't have to sit and wait. And then... Do we have to vote on accepting the continuance request?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Right, okay. I'll take a motion to accept the request for continuance on project 45-21.
Until 3/28, moved.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Schultz. Seconded. Was that you, Mike, that seconded?
Yes, I was.
You're a good man. Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor. Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Ms. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett, did we determine if he was here or not?
He's not here yet.
Okay, and then the chair votes aye, so that'd be 4-0-1. Okay, next up, for the same reasons, definitive subdivision plan 46-21, 1-13 North Carver Road, LSC Tuscana.
Yeah, this hit that.
Yeah, I move that we continue 4621, definitive subdivision plan 113 North Carver Road, LSC Tuscana until 3/28.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Baptiste. All in favor of Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and so Mr. Corbett's still not with us. So, there'd be 4-0-1. So, moved. Okay. 4-0-0, excuse me, 4-0-0. For the next projects, these are here strictly for the purpose of freezing zoning for the bylaws that existed prior to June 12th, 2021, town meeting, which included a bylaw with a significant restriction on solar farms. Presentations of these plans will be made, followed by a vote. These are not here, if I understand correctly, Ken, these are not here before us to approve anything other than freezing the zoning bylaw with the subdivision, correct? It's not to vote on or approve any type of development solar farm. It's just strictly to freeze the zoning.
Essentially, you're right. It's a zoning freeze because they're submitting a subdivision plan under section, chapter 48, section 6 of the Mass General laws, whereby a client files a preliminary subdivision plan prior to a town meeting on a zoning article, filed in seven months by definitive subdivision plan. Then the property shown on the plan is protected against the zone change for eight years.
Okay.
The Mass Division Board ruled on this protection and found that the protection applies while the subdivision is under any type of review process, which means that if it's appealed and denied and appealed, or if it's held up and processed or rescinded by the planning board, it still holds the protection of the zoning freeze simply by the filing of it. This was reinforced by the appeals court in the Kindergarten Learning Centers versus Westford. I think the way they described it was key to our way we approach these ones here. That the decision of the Supreme Court has the effect of rewarding sham submissions filed with no intention of implementation, but solely to secure a zoning freeze. So even if the development plans change to something completely different than a subdivision, the protection persists and may be relied upon to protect the developer's rights. However, missing the seventh month deadline is fatal to the application. This does not mean that the projects on this protected land are unregulated. The fact is that all of the existing zoning reviews and permitting needed to use before still will be applied to the special permit review that is necessary to gain approval of a project such as a solar farm on the property.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead.
No, no, that's quite right. Go ahead.
Sure, through you to Mr. Buckland. I fully understand the zoning protection and protecting the developer's rights. Thank you. You've made that quite clear and helped us to understand it. What is our obligation? If we're going to approve subdivisions, how do we protect the town? Even though we believe these are sham applications, what do we need to do to protect the town down the road, if anything?
You need to establish a covenant after the approval of the subdivision, if you approve them. There's no reason to, if there's no reason to deny them, you have to approve them.
Right, I understand that.
What you have to do is get an agreement in place that says that the subdivision will be built according to the plan. And if not, then it would not be used as a development of the land.
Okay, so that will all be stipulated in the covenant.
That's right. What the covenant does is say that you have to build the road as shown on the plan before you can put in residential homes on the lots as shown on the plan. What it also can do is say that the intent is a non-residential use, but that non-residential use is not guaranteed and requires permits to get it approved on the site. In that way, you can protect the town's interests.
Okay, thank you. One more clarifying question. You're helping me understand, get us through this. Why then, if these are sham applications, are some of the applicants requesting waivers?
They're not requesting waivers necessarily. Those were waivers that we identified, the staff identified on the applications because they weren't including the improvements as required by our subdivision rules and regulations.
Oh, can you... So, we're not necessarily on the COA going to include the waivers?
No, you don't. In some cases, you may not have to include the waivers.
All right, okay, thank you. As we progress, if I'm unclear, I'll ask again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, because I am having a hard time digesting all of this as well. Reading through some of the documents, it says that they have no intentions of building the roads as shown on the subdivision plans, but yet you're telling us that the covenant has to state that they're going to build it according to the plans. So, I'm not really absorbing what we're trying to do here.
Are you saying that the subdivision doesn't do anything more than create additional lots for single-family homes or whatever is allowed by zoning in that district? You're just saying that the subdivision is a subdivision that they've submitted, and it can be approved as a subdivision because they have the road and the lots laid out according to the zoning of the town.
Okay, and I think this is the part where I'm having a hard time with. So, the very first one, 40-21, 140 Tarnet Road. We've been through this project. We've seen that the proposed plan, we've approved it. Why is it, I don't understand what it is we're doing if he's already got an approved subdivision for a solar farm.
He doesn't have an approved subdivision. He has a special permit. And his concern in that case was that the special permit isn't protected the same way that the subdivision plan protects the zoning. So, what he's doing is submitting the subdivision plan to later on protections that he doesn't have with the use of the special permit alone.
Okay, well, I guess with that said, is there an, the applicant or the representative of the applicants for 40-21 definitive subdivision plan for 140 Tarnet Road, AD Makepeace Company, Care of GAF Engineering, MAP 111, lots 1,000F, 1,000H1, 1,000H2, three-lot subdivision. Is there a representative present?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Greg Sampson.
Mr. Chairman, if I may suggest a process here.
Go ahead. I'm all ears.
I would suggest that there'd be a staff report that Aaron, since he did the review of the subdivision, give you a summary of it, of the subdivision plans, and then allow the applicant to respond with any additional information that they feel necessary. And then take it from there.
Okay, and can Aaron share that on the screen?
Yeah, I can do that as well. I mean, I have it in front of me, but let me pull it up on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, I have it here as well.
Okay, I can pull it up. Give me one second.
Well, it's okay. I can read it, Aaron, if you don't want me to.
All right, yeah, I'll just run through it. I'm going to just kind of read off kind of what's here. I'll do it really quick because I know I don't have time. So, for the first project, 40-21, it's a...
Dave, you gonna call a meeting tonight? No, not bothering with that.
Okay, the first project, 40-21, it's a three-lot subdivision. It has a 391-foot cul-de-sac, private wells with onsite sewage. The road design is a 20-foot wide paved road with three-and-a-half shoulders, four-foot grass area on the sidewalk side, a five-foot wide sidewalk on one side, 12-and-a-half-feet shoulder on the side of the road opposite of the sidewalk, six-inch precast concrete curbing and a 50-foot right-of-way. The three lots, the acreage are 104.42 acres, 29.19 acres, and 83.07 acres. They filed their preliminary plan on May 5th, 2021, and they filed the definitive plan on November 29th, 2021. So, they met the seven-month filing date for a zoning freeze. And like we said, they already have an approved special permit, and they were also approved by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, has the applicant anything to add to that?
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. I don't really have anything more to add to it. I just did have one question, though, at the... It says the date to render a decision is February 27th.
Yeah.
And does that also include the time to record the decision with the clerk's office?
That does not include it. That was just the seven months from, I mean, that is the 90 days from when the definitive plan was filed. That's where that February 27th date is from. It doesn't include the time from when it was recorded, when it would be recorded with the clerk. That's just nine months from when the definitive plan was recorded with the clerk's office. I mean, 90 days, sorry, 90 days from when the definitive plan was recorded with the clerk's office.
Okay, I'm, perhaps, I'm not certain on this, but I thought that the certificate of final action needed to be recorded at the clerk's office within that nine-month timeframe? And if we have to grant an extension in doing so, to allow the planning board to do so, we have no issue with that?
This is, I'm just going to refer to Ken here real quick. So, the 90 days from when it's, hold on one second, let me...
90 days is the time required to file a decision, so if the decision can't be filed, a certificate of approval that we drafted up can't be filed in that time, in the next two days, then we'll want an extension.
Right.
So, to Bill's point, we should be accepting an extension on his behalf on this? In order to allow him or allow us to do the work we need to do so that it can be recorded?
That would give us a buffer. That would be helpful, yes.
Personally, I would be okay with that. I'll be honest with you. I kind of get in the feeling that these projects are being jammed down our throats. Like I said earlier, with the amount of correspondence that comes in at the last minute, I'm not comfortable looking at these and saying, you know, with a casual, "Yeah", you know, "We should vote to approve them", but I don't know. Is there anybody else on the board that feels this way?
I felt somewhat like you did, Mr. King, although Mr. Buckland has made me feel better. So, perhaps, let's do one, and before we decide whether we need to extend the filing deadline, let's get to the end and see what kind of decision we're going to make on this one. And then if we're going to need time to sign the paperwork and get it into the clerk's office, then we request Mr. Madden. Assuming we approve or deny or make a decision one way or the other, the paperwork still has to get filed, and we can work with him on the timing. But if we get to the end and we're not comfortable making a decision, then we can ask for a continuance. I think, so I'm kind of working my way up to answering your question. I feel better on some than, no, no, some of them I'm not as concerned about as others because I think I understand them better.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Sampson. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm with Womble Bond Dickinson. So, I can just add a little bit to the staff report and to Bill's comments. We certainly would be fine with extending the period of time for the filing of a decision if that's helpful and the board requests it. To provide a little additional context about, you know, the process and how the zoning freeze relates to the previously approved plan. Mr. Buckland was correct that, you know, one concern we have is that the special permit, the approval that was issued by this board for this project, it doesn't provide a long-term protection against the subsequent zoning changes. That actually expires after 12 months. So, that's the rationale for going through this process and filing...
I heard a new decision where I could get myself in trouble here.
The plan approval, the definitive plan after the preliminary plan filing. So, I thought that context was important. We do appreciate that the board approved this project, a project on this property before, but it's not a long-term protection from the subsequent zoning changes. So, I don't think there's much to add to the staff report. It described the subdivision filing correctly. It was noted as part of the staff review that a waiver was required for requirement for five-foot shoulders where sidewalks are installed. We looked at that, and it is possible for us to modify the plan to provide a five-foot shoulder between the sidewalk and the road if that's what's requested. Given the fact that we really don't intend to build this road, we are hopeful that, you know, if it makes sense, given that there's no sidewalk leading off the site to allow for the waiver to be granted in the public interest, we'd appreciate that as well. As you know, there is no other use proposed on this. There was some questions about, you know, what would happen. The way the approval process works is if the town approves this, we'd be obligated to build the road in order to convey any of the lots shown. That's not our hope. We don't want to convey the lots. We don't want to build residential structures. We're just looking to preserve the zoning that was in effect. We are fine with the form of, you know, generally form with the covenant that's been provided. What the covenant does is basically say, despite the fact that we filed this residential subdivision, we're not going to be allowed to build residential lots unless and until we come back to this planning board for further approvals. So, in the, Mr. Schultz mentioned what's protecting the town. I think this covenant is designed so that we're not looking to actually put a three-lot subdivision in at any time. If we do decide that a residential use is desirable, we'd have to come back and modify this plan and meet before the board again. So, the reality is the covenant does protect against that. It allows us to pursue other lawful uses. There's an automatic rescission provision incorporated into certain decisions by these boards. If that's fine, too. If this subdivision approval is rescinded after a period of time for failure to build it, that doesn't affect the zoning freeze either. So, if that's a condition that the board imposes, that's acceptable to the applicant as well.
Ken, let me ask you a question. If we go ahead and we decide to approve these subdivision plans for a road that is never going to get built, does this negate the previously approved special permit?
No, it does not.
So, all the work that we did with the Makepeace folks as far as coming up with an acceptable plan, all of that's not going to go away. We won't have to go through that process a second time.
No, you won't. It stays. As long as the special permit is good.
Okay.
In fact, on the, you know, Mr. Chair, it actually preserves our right to build under that special permit.
Well, I may ask some questions that don't make any sense, but like I said, I get, you know, a very uneasy feeling when we start getting pushed into a corner by deadlines, so, you know, the questions are going to come, whether they're right, wrong, or indifferent.
I think Mr. Madden has a comment.
I guess, go ahead, Bill.
I just want to comment on the waiver on the shoulder, you know. If it's required, that's fine, but I think if you read the body of the subdivision rules and regulations under section four, street and roadway construction, it's pretty defined that a three-foot shoulder is required. The detail on the plate in the back is for a, like a residential collector street, and it does show a five-foot shoulder for that type of street in that layout. But there's a provision within street and roadway construction that specifically speaks to a three-foot shoulder. And that's why we put three foot or three-and-a-half foot on the plan, recognizing that the minimum of three was there. But whatever the pleasure of the board is, is fine with us on this.
Charlie, do you have any comments on the plan that they submitted for this?
I have no comment, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
None for me, Mike.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm all set.
Okay. So, I guess really the only concern that I'm hearing is just the date that the paperwork has to be in the filed. So, if we did elect to go forward tonight after public comment, obviously, and vote on this, do you, Bill, do you feel that you have the time, that we all have the time to get this in before the deadline? Or would you prefer an extension to kind of relax the pressure a little bit?
I don't believe that we would need any time for anything. If the planning board is comfortable in their ability to present the town clerk with a decision that would, I think, be optimal as far as we're concerned, not require an extension of time.
Mr. Chairman, we have certificates of approval already drafted up so that they could be, if signed in the next couple of days, could be filed and meet the time deadline.
So, if we can finish up tonight, should it be, should it be approved? And the members can get into the planning office between now and Friday, we're in good shape.
That's right. Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. Does any of the board members have any other comments before we open it up for public comment?
I kind of go along with your idea, Mike, in the beginning. I don't like the idea of them shoving it down our throat. We're not matching their being. They're supposed to match ours. And I think we're circumventing the whole system. Don't trust them. I feel very uneasy.
All right, thank you, Mike. Appreciate your comment. Okay, at this point, we'll open it up to... Ken, do we need to open it up for a public comment one more time?
I think that might be appropriate as long as there's reasonable comments and it doesn't go over things we've already gone over.
But we've never closed the public hearing, which we would have to do.
Right, so that's why I asked if we need to allow the public one last opportunity before we close the hearing.
We have Nancy McHale with her hand up.
Good evening, Nancy. How are you?
I am well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. I do have a question. Looking at all of these, for the 140 Tarnet, which you're looking at right now, there's a covenant attached to that. Is that part of what you would be signing between now and the 27th? Is that part of what you would be signing between now and the 27th? Um, I'm just trying to understand the process because it looked to me that there was only covenants for 140 and 150 on all of these, um, freeze plans.
Uh, wasn't part of the, just, it was just certificate of approval that we were looking at to, uh, to meet the deadline at this time.
Okay, so the covenants, so you would issue the certificate of, um, approval before you had a covenant in place?
That's right. The certificate of approval lets sets out the, uh, the the process of, uh, of agreeing to a covenant and getting the plan, uh, in place and endorsing them and filing them on the land records.
Okay, that just seems a little back backwards to me, but clearly I'm not up to date on what the process is. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Nancy. Uh, is there anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for forty dash twenty-one, 140 to Honet Road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Um, it, take a vote, Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Uh, closing the public hearing, aye.
Yep. Mr. Ms. Gleason?
Closing the public hearing, aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero. Um, public hearing is now officially closed on this matter. Um, having said that, I would entertain a motion to, well, it it sounds like there's some, some reservations before we, um, before we entertained a, a, a vote on, uh, either approval or denial. Um, it 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 sounds like maybe an extension would kind of soften that vote. Are you sure that you don't want to request an extension uh, on this before we take a vote on approval?
Um, I guess I'd like to ask the board if they could, if there's any concerns we could address in the course of the hearing tonight. Um, you know, I I I understand that the zoning freeze concept and the the way the plan works with respect to previously approved projects is um, unique and, you know, fortunately is not something that comes up often, but, um, to the extent we can offer any comments or you know, be in a position to address any concerns specifically, I I I'm happy to do so. I think, uh, with respect to, you know, I know there was, um, draft decisions were circulated just today. Um, I I don't know if there's other information that anyone had a concern with. Um, we're certainly not looking to, you know, force a decision or put the, um, the board in any position where they feel constrained by time, but I just, you know, if the, if there's an extension, I'd be curious to know what we can do to, uh, address any concerns of the board in the meantime.
Well, for me personally, i- it's just a matter of reabsorbing, uh, any and all information, both new and previously submitted. Uh, like I said earlier, um, there's, there was a, a quite a lot of information that came across the email today, and I, you know, I just find it unnerving that I have to read, absorb, go research, and then understand everything a few hours before a meeting that I'm expected to take a vote on. I I, you know, I I I don't care for that, that, that way of approaching decisions that affect the town and, you know, especially on this scale. So that's just my opinion. Um, I'm only one of, of, you know, five people, so.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I can summarize my point if you'd like, and then we can run around and and give the applicant an understanding if you'd like.
Sure, that would be much appreciated, actually.
Okay, so, uh, Mike, I had, fortunately, I had the time. I reviewed all of the material that came out today. I reviewed the draft, um, COAs. Uh, there are some, some holes that would have to be filled in based on what happens today. Um, and I think, uh, some minor wording updates, but I do understand the COA. Uh, and as I said at the beginning, uh, my feeling about, uh, each project is unique. Uh, Attorney Sampson, uh, has spoken, uh, before and again today, and and I believe um, that I understand their intent and, uh, believe, uh, the position they've taken, and I also understand that they're willing to sign the form of covenant um, that I've seen a draft of, which actually says what he says. They don't intend to, to build a residential subdivision. Um, so having had the time to process that, for this application, uh, I'm comfortable granting, um, the approval purely for the purpose of zoning freeze. So that's, that's sort of where I'm at, but I agree that I had more time than you did today.
Okay, well, I appreciate the input. It means a lot to me. Um, is there anyone else that wants to 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 weigh in with with field thoughts before we, uh, go ahead and entertain a vote?
Well, Mike, I just want to say, I didn't have a chance to read everything today. It just came in so fast. I was very busy. I'm uncomfortable on a regular basis, having to have ten pieces of text come through, have to read it, understand it, and come here a couple hours later and discuss it.
Okay, thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
I'd recommend all you guys retire so you have time to do this.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds darn good to me.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I I I am chair of my planning board and I understand your position completely. I, if additional time is needed, just, just let us know how much time you need to, um, you know, get comfortable to 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 take the vote. I know this was a special meeting, so I don't know if this is being considered to be a kind of an off-track, um, or, you know, the next meeting or something like that is when the board would feel comfortable voting, but we could, we could certainly, you know, have the full package presented to the board members to 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 vote at that hearing.
Um, I mean, li- listening to the board members speak, I I, I haven't heard from Ms. Gleason yet, um, but it sounds like the majority of us would feel a little more comfortable about taking a vote on this if we had a bit more time to absorb the information. Is that, is, am I?
I think that additional time would be good.
Okay, so, having said that, um, Ken, does, does the, does the next me- eating, is that agenda pretty full, or or do we need to move this out another, another meeting cycle?
Um, I don't know if Ken's there, but I would just throw my suggestion. Um, because the next meeting is on the 28th, which is Monday.
So we don't have enough time.
Which would be quick for you guys. The next meeting in March would be March fourteenth, which hopefully would be enough time to get all, everything in order in terms of little updates to the COA and for everyone to have time to review the projects, and then hopefully at that point, you know, there could be some sort of decision on them, but that would be the next meeting after the 28th, and I, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't seem like 28th would be enough time, um, for the board, so.
I I would have to agree, especially for me. Um, it's a little more challenging for me working a full-time job in another state and then trying to draw up all this stuff at the, at the 11th hour.
Right.
Um, Mr. Chairman, before, before we take the vote, before we take the vote, just to summarize, uh, for this application, um, there's, uh, one waiver, uh, for the sidewalks, for the five-foot sidewalks, um, uh, uh, shoulders, not the, that's the only thing, and the applicant has agreed to the form of covenant. Those were the two key things for me. Um, so if that's, if if that, if that's what the applicant is agreeing to, then I'm, I'm, I'm okay moving the the thing out and not having, getting any more information on this. So does anybody else want more information?
I don't, I don't, I, well, I can't speak for the others, obviously, but I don't think it's a matter of more information. It's a matter of being able to read and absorb and understand the information before I I say yes or no. It it's, these are,
Well, I think it's for all, the first four for make peace, but, um,
Correct.
And and I was just trying to be, I I I think the the, these are the four that I was most comfortable with because the applicant has agreed to the covenant. Um, so I was real, I I think I was more directing my question to Mr. Madden and Mr. Attorney Sampson. Um, did, did you agree with my understanding?
You you're correct, Mr. Schultz, yes. That we we are comfortable with the covenant and, um,
And and the only waiver you were looking for was the shoulder.
That that's right, and and if the board's uncomfortable with granting a waiver, we we can modify the plan to eliminate the need for that.
Thank you. I'm I'm sorry, Mike. I wasn't trying to push you. I was trying to make sure that I understood where I was.
Yep, no, I understand. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm rereading, I'm reading the covenant for the first time. So again, you know, here we are absorbing the information at the 11th hour, and that's the part that makes me un- uncomfortable. Um,
I think we could go ahead and 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 continue it. I I'm okay with continuing it.
Okay. The, um, then I I I would entertain a, uh, motion to continue the, uh, Aaron, can we group all of make pieces together since we're having the same concern on awful project, or do we have to load on them individually?
Uh, I would say vote on them individually, but ask Ken, what do you think about that?
Well, we have to close the hearing, public hearing on each one individually, Mike.
That's true. You're right. I was just, I just thought of that. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to continue the definitive subdivision plan forty dash twenty-one, 140 to Honet Road, eighty make piece, care of GAF engineering. Map one eleven, lots one thousand dash F, one thousand dash H one, one thousand dash H two to the planning board meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, uh, by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Schultz. Um, Mr. Baptiste. We lost him.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason? No, I'm sorry, Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero.
Mike, could I just interject just a couple of things here?
Please.
Uh, okay. Um, Jane, are you a full-time member now? Or still in the, you're still an associate?
The intent was to make me one. I've been in conversation with the Appointing Authority.
Okay.
I don't know if I am one yet.
I don't, I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into this, but only full-time members can vote on a subdivision plan at this point in time. Hopefully Jane will get her appointment real soon.
Okay.
Um, and secondly, I'd only make a comment that, um, with respect to continuing it to the fourteenth, that means that's the drop deadline date for everything, so action has to be taken prior to that date for you to get your filing into the town clerk. I would recommend that instead of the fourteenth, you simply make it thirty days from today, which will carry it beyond the fourteenth. You can continue it to the fourteenth. I'll carry it out for thirty days, gives you time right after that to get your filings done.
Mr. Chair, if I could just address, we're we're happy to provide the extension for that thirty days, but I think the continuance would hold to the fourteenth. So we'll, we'll, we'll send separate notice to extend the time period by which the planning board has to file its decision. And I think then that can allow your, um, continuance to stand. Does that work? For the board?
That works for me, that, that works for me. Charlie, does that sound reasonable?
I think that's the appropriate way. That'll, that'll give you a little bit of breathing room, because if you want to make a decision on the fourteenth, it'll be too late. Unless you extend it beyond that to give yourself time to act. So I think a thirty-day extension from today covers that.
Yep.
Then it gives you time to do whatever action you want to do up to and including the fourteenth. And if you vote to, uh, um, approve and sign the COA between then and the end of the thirty days, you've got the, the, uh, time period in which to do that.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One, one more question, um, and I don't know, it's probably to Mr. Buckland. Um, uh, I am going to be traveling on the fourteenth. I will be able to participate. I know we're going back to face-to-face meetings March first. Uh, will I be allowed to participate, uh, remotely on the fourteenth?
Uh, because town meeting had, uh, asked us to do hybrid meetings from now on. I I'm assuming that we'll have both, uh, uh, online connection that you can make as well as, uh, uh, call in and, uh, be in person, uh, and and making your choice either way.
Great, okay. I I am planning to travel that day, and then I'll work out with Aaron how to sign whatever decision needs to get signed.
Okay, very good. So we should, uh, at the, after this conversation, then we should probably retake this vote on forty dash twenty-one. Uh, so I entertain a motion to extend forty dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan located at one forty to Honet Road and extend it thirty days from today's date. Do we have said motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Schultz, uh, Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that would be four, zero, one, as Ms. Gleason cannot vote.
Uh, Mr. Chair, are we certain of that she's not a full member? Can I get something texted to me?
I I didn't get any indication that she had been elevated to a full number.
Uh, Mr. King, can I speak for a minute? Part of the Appointing Authority, so, um.
I can help clear this up, Mr. King, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Uh, Jane was appointed as a full member on Thursday this past week by the Appointing Authority.
Right.
Also, as far as Kyle's question, uh, which has been in place for a while, as long as the board has a quorum and the chair of the board is willing, a a member can participate remotely. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Slaven.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jane.
All right, let's try this one.
I will note, though, that I have not been sworn in. I have not been notified that I was, uh, the appointment had been made, so.
Unfortunately, then Jane can't vote.
Okay. All right, so the vote that we just took stands for zero one.
Mike, one other, uh, procedural thing, if I might?
Uh, absolutely.
Make sure that the decision to extend the time period for thirty days gets recorded with the town clerk.
Okay, and that would be on who shoulders?
Uh, planning board has the obligation to make sure it gets done, but you can assign it to somebody.
I can, uh, Mr. King, I can do that. I'll, I'll send you over the request email, so you'll see it and have it recorded. I can scan it and send it to you guys and show that it's been recorded, but I'll handle that.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, um, moving on to agenda item number two, continued public hearings, forty-one dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan for one fifty to Honet Road, eighty make piece company care of GAF engineering, map one eleven and one twelve, lots one thousand B, one thousand C, and one thousand, three-lot subdivision. Um, before I, uh, go ahead and make the go ahead and make the assumption, I know we have to close the public hearing beforehand, but it, uh, um, can I safely assume that we're going to take a similar vote on this as well as the next two?
I do have a question on this one, uh, Mr. Chairman, but I'm generally, uh, in favor of what you said.
Okay.
There's something unique in staff report about this one.
Okay.
So do you want to let Aaron go first?
Please.
Um, yeah, this one, um, I would say this one's very similar to the last one, almost mirrors it. Oh, the, the only difference between this one and the last one, um, the road design, everything is the same through lots, the length of the road is almost similar. Only different one is that the conservation commission, um, approved this project, but it's in the appeal process um, right now, but like the, uh, the date to make a decision, the run decision is still the same, so the same continuance would have to apply. Um, but the only thing is that the conservation commission approved it, but it's in the appeal process right now, as far as I know. Not that changed recently, but that was as of like last week, I think.
Yeah. So my question goes to that point. Does that appeal process in any way impact what we're doing? That, that may be appropriate to Attorney Sampson, I, I
Yeah, I'm happy to answer through the chair. It, it's not relevant to, in, in our opinion. The conservation commission's under whole separate authority, so, um, it, it doesn't affect us one way or another, as far as how this is processed. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, any more comments from the, uh, from the board, uh, before we, uh, open this up to, uh, public hearing and possibly having the public hearing closed? Having heard none, um, I will open it up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this, um, project?
Terry Cosgrove has his hand up.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cosgrove, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, I tried to raise my hand in the last one. I apologize if I didn't do it. My question is, could someone explain to me the content and the purpose of the covenant that has been referred to in the prior and in, and this one as well, please? And then I may have a follow-up question.
I'd be happy to answer that question. The, uh, the covenant is, uh, an agreement between the developer and the town that the road improvements will be made. So the access, the utilities, uh, everything shown in the, uh, to improve the access to the, to the properties uh, will be built before units, residential units are constructed on the lots that are shown on the plan.
And is it, is it to the discretion of the committee to add other items to such a covenant, particularly whereas here, as has been mentioned, there's, there's no intent to, to build residential units anyway. Are there other items that can find their way into such a covenant?
Only on agreement with the, um, with the applicant.
And if the applicant were not to agree, then that would be a consideration for you to decide whether or not you would approve of the, uh, of the plan?
It could be, yes.
Is there a is, is there a, uh, it sounds like that there's a suggestion in there somewhere, Mr. Cosgrove?
Well, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would ask you to kindly consider uh, that there be a condition either, either now or later that all these projects all, uh, obligate the applicant to seek an earth removal permit for any earth that's removed and that a unilateral declaration that all earth removal is per se impactful to agriculture be, be unacceptable. Uh, seems to be a very sensible, smart thing to do, uh, given the pattern of, of allegations that have been made in multiple towns, including Wareham about earth removal, uh, it would seem to me to be a sensible thing to do and something the applicant should be able to, with ease and facility, uh, demonstrate that the earth remove would be used exclusively and documented for its own agricultural purposes and not as a ruse uh, for, uh, industrial sand mining.
Um, if, thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Can I, if, if, if I understand correctly, and maybe Charlie can help me with this, wouldn't a, 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 a condition of that type be part of the, um, the final subdivision plan if they did elect to either, uh, do the solar project and/or, uh, residential housing?
It'd have to do with the, uh, development of the property and not the, um, the subdivision, uh, uh, road construction that's part of the covenant.
Okay, um, so i- if they elected to, to, to do something with the, the earth removed to build the roadway, it's strictly what's the roadway. It's nothing surrounding it.
That's right. That's what the covenant is for. It says you can't build on the lots that, uh, where this is providing access. Uh, until you've got that access in place.
Right, okay. So, um, strictly my opinion, Mr. Cosgrove, and of course, you know, the, the board can weigh in, but it seems to me that to, to put a, a, a request for that in the covenant for such a small area, i.e. just the roadway, that doesn't really seem to, to have much impact on, on your concern as far as earth removal. So I, me personally, I don't know that it makes any sense to, to insert that here.
And as a reminder to, 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 uh, the audience, Mr. King, this, uh, application does have a site permit, uh, site plan special permit already in place.
Already in place.
Would govern, govern the construction of the solar project. Um, should it ever happen? So that, that is in place and this does not, Mr. Buckland reminded us at the beginning, uh, that this doesn't overrule that plan.
Correct.
In, in any way.
Right. And, and like I said, I, I think the roadways that are on the subdivision plan are, are such a minute part of the overall property that i- it, it doesn't make any sense to me to, to, to put a covenant on it, uh, for that purpose. Um, I hope that answers your question to a point, Mr. Cosgrove.
Well, I, I think I understand the logic of what you're saying, but you know, the problem with this, of course, is if they take all the sand out of there, uh, and say, well, it was incidental to the road, then it's, then it's too late, it's gone. And if it's that obvious and, and, and logical, then it seems to me it, it ought to be a, a very easy thing for the applicant to agree to.
Mr. Chairman, can I, um, give a little bit of information on that?
Yes, please.
The covenant refers to the construction of the road only. That's the only reason why it's there. Whatever uses were allowed prior to the June vote of town meeting are in effect by having had this plan filed. So no matter what uses were in effect then, they are in effect now. The covenant only refers to the construction of the road and only refers to the release of lots before they can be built upon.
Okay.
And
All right, so then even
That's the only thing the covenant does. Uh, anything that would go in the covenant would be as an addendum, as a, as a, uh, special condition of approval. Uh, should there be some evidence to the fact that something other than this road is being built? But that's the only thing that's being really requested here is to build the subdivision road the way it's been shown on the plan.
Okay. All right. So that, that, that even, that strengthens my, my thought about the, the usefulness of the covenant. So thank you, Charlie. Um, Ms. Berry, you have something to say?
Thank you, and thank you for including me today. Um, I, I just have a question. Um, I'm kind of new to your processes, so I, I'm trying to learn. I was very involved where I used to live. Um, will these plans, um, have some language that ensures that they go to Massachusetts DEP for review, uh, before any work is done, um, next to a wetland? So that is my question. Um, I, I'm very concerned about the wetlands and want to make sure that uh, nothing is done to disturb the, the flow of water, the floodplain and all that sort of stuff.
All right, thank you. Um, i- as in the past, when, when we're working with these plans, they, they still have to pass muster with the conservation commission. So i- if there's anything that's going to be done, that's going to affect the, the hundred-foot buffer or the thirty-foot no-touch, uh, conservation would certainly weigh in and, and stop them from doing anything potentially harmful.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, the, the draft decision of the board does include language requiring all applicable other permits and conditions. So if the roads were ever to be constructed, we would have to comply with all other permitting approval requirements.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to weigh in before we take a vote on closing the public hearing? Hearing none, uh, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for definitive subdivision plan forty-one dash twenty-one, one fifty to Honet Road. Uh, eighty make peace company JAF engineering map one eleven, one twelve lots one thousand B, one thousand C, and one thousand, three lot subdivision.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Um, take a vote, Mr. Baptiste. Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Ms. Gleason? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gleason. Uh, Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye four, zero, one. Uh, public hearing on this is now officially closed. Um, having said that, I would entertain a motion to grant a thirty-day extension on forty-one dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan one fifty to Honet Road.
So moved.
Uh, do we want to, uh, are we going to take up the continuance to the next meeting separately? Or are you going to put, put it all in one motion?
I would, well, I would put it in all in one motion, extend it to thirty days and put it on the agenda for three fourteen.
Continue to three fourteen. Okay.
Yeah.
I second that as amended.
Okay, thank you. Um, motion by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Schultz. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye four, zero, one.
And then Aaron will, Aaron will do the paperwork for this one as well.
Yes, I will do that.
For the clerk.
Yep.
Thank you. Next up, forty-two dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan twenty-seven charge pond road, eighty make peace company care of Beals and Thomas, Inc. Map one ten lots ten fifteen, ten sixteen, ten twenty-four, three lot subdivision. Is there someone here for the applicant?
That would be me as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Rick Sampson will move on.
Um, it's my opinion, Mr. Chairman, that this is following the pattern of the two previous make peace applications.
Yes, that, I, I, I would have to agree with that. Is there any from the board on this prior to the public? Hearing none, I would entertain any comments from the public? I don't see any hands. Now, throwing your hands up? Nope. Um, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
On definitive uh, second?
Second.
Okay, motion to close public hearing by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Schultz. Uh, Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye four, zero, one. Public hearing is closed. I would now entertain a motion to grant a thirty-day extension and move this to the agenda for the planning board meeting of three fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And chair votes aye four, zero, one. And now, next forty-three dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan zero Maple Springs, eighty make peace company care of Beals and Thomas, Inc. Map one eleven lots ten, 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 eleven, ten, twelve, ten, thirteen, ten, fourteen, ten, fifteen in LC six, three lot subdivision.
This is forty-three, twenty-one?
Forty-three, twenty-one, correct.
Yeah, let me catch up here.
Looks like we're in the same situation here. Need to render a decision by the twenty-seventh. Looks like the summary is all the same.
Except, uh, Mr. Mr. King, they do not have a special permit, uh, outstanding for this one. I don't know if that makes a difference.
I, um, I'm not sure that it would. See, it's how the special permit's not helping them in the zoning freeze anyway.
Okay, that is just a difference in the staff report. Aaron, there's nothing else, right?
Nope, that's, that's the only, uh, pretty much the only difference. It's kind of set up the same way. Um, I think the only difference, it's not a huge deal, is this one has town water, I think, and the other ones had. And the, others don't have town water as well, or they had private wells, but the only real difference was the, uh, they don't have an approved special permit, so.
Okay. Um, any input from the board on this before we move forward? Okay, hearing none.
Uh, just Mr. King, through you to Mr. Sampson, uh, this, you guys agreed all the same conditions for this application that we've been discussing?
Yes, Mr. Schultz, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing, uh, no input from the board, um, is there, entertain any input from the public?
Faith is on to speak.
Yes, Mr. King, I, I, on this one, I would really like to weigh in. Number one, they don't have a special permit. Um, number two, there are threatened and endangered species on this site, which has been brought up in hearings in the past on this particular property. And also I'm concerned because it's not, it's showing multiple lots, not just lots for a solar panel. And I do see a cul-de-sac. So, you know, the, the issue of what the purpose or use of this property would be specifically, I think, needs to be addressed. Um, uh, besides these other concerns. So I'm, I'm just bringing this up because development on this site was already brought up in a public hearing and shut down because of threatened and endangered species.
Okay, thank you for your input. Um, is there anybody else that would like to weigh in? Okay, hearing none, um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on forty-three dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan for zero Maple Springs. Eighty make
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And chair votes aye four, zero, one. Um, I would also entertain a motion to extend a thirty-day extension and place this and place this on the planning board agenda for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett, Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Chair votes aye four zero one. Um, as a as a matter of, um, process, Ken, do we have the, um, the latitude to move a a particular item up or down, or i- is, are we kind of carved in stone on this, uh, agenda order?
You can take the order, you can have it if you want, you're you're prerogative.
So if if we wanted to go to additional continued public hearings for thirty-nine dash twenty-one, we we could make that call?
Yes, you could.
Okay, the the reason that I say that is, I'm looking at the clock and I'm looking at what we got left, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that we're going to be able to finish at our six o'clock hard stop. And, um, it it's just, it's my opinion that that we move fifty-nine Main Street up to the next gen, the next item, uh, that we discuss. And then we'll go back to the, uh, to the agenda as it, uh, is printed. Uh, but I'll put that out to the board. Okay, thank you. Uh, so next up will be the additional continued public hearings for thirty-nine dash twenty-one, site plan review for fifty-nine Main Street. Warren Q O B Z LLC, map forty-seven, lots eleven twenty-four, eleven twenty-five, eleven twenty-six concerning a sixty-five hundred square foot restaurant with pavilion and commercial retail space. Um, do we have someone here for the applicant?
I'm Bill Madden, here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. And if if I remember correctly, um, somebody can obviously correct me if I'm wrong. I I think the the last thing of concern at our last meeting was strictly traffic mitigation, is that correct?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, um, I actually got a chance to read this, because it did come in a couple of days ago. So it was, it was nice to be able to read it and absorb it prior to, uh, prior to tonight. Would you like to, uh, Bill, present the, um, the crosswalk? Mitigation plan for this?
Um, yeah, I guess, uh, essentially what we did is we talked about, um, providing some some mitigation at the crosswalk down there, um, between Merchant's Way in in Main Street. And we had submitted a, um, some equipment cuts of a solar-type powered, um, flashing signal that was, um, activated by by pedestrians in the crosswalk and what have you, so I submitted, um, one of those, um, one of those material cuts to, uh, to the planning board for review. I think that they they submitted that one, um, to other board members and concerned parties, so that was essentially it. You know, there were a couple of other things that we're going to do, um, there weren't what I would consider like a structural measure, there're just some operational things and, um, you know, we hadn't really nailed them down one hundred and one hundred percent, but some of the things like, um, you know, having perhaps a few of the employees um, park somewhere else other than in that parking lot, that was really, um, one of the one of the things that we talked about, and we we looked at, um, one seventy-six Main Street as a, as an alternative, um, place. As that's another property that's been, uh, that's under control by Mr. O'Connor, uh, I'm sorry. By Danny Warren at the, at the current time, so, you know, the hard and fast was the pedestrian access walk, walkway and we're entertaining thoughts about, um, having employees park off-site.
Okay, I, I, to be honest, I don't think that your actual parking on-site is is really the 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 huge concern more so than just traffic and and pedestrian safety. And I I like the crosswalk, uh, the sign, I think that's, um, that's a big step forward from, uh, the methods being utilized now for the VeriLife people, so I I I think they're going to end up, uh, with a big plus at, uh, Mr. Warren's, uh, generosity. Um, you know, I I I made, I made a point of going down to that area, uh, Sunday for for a drive and coming at it from a couple of different, uh, directions. And then I thought back to our last discussion and some summer traffic. And I I genuinely, after thinking about it long and hard, I generally, genuinely think that the amount of traffic generated by that restaurant, especially the style of restaurant that it is, is not going to adversely affect anything. I mean, the traffic is the traffic, especially summer traffic. And having, um, having a a project of this quality anchoring the end of Main Street and hopefully kickstarting the revitalization of Main Street, I think is is a big plus. So that's that's my two cents worth. I I I love the sign, though, that was, that was a great idea, whoever came up with that. You're going to take, uh, credit for that, Bill?
I think it's a group effort all the way across the board, and it won't, wasn't a sole effort on anyone's, one person's part.
Charlie, is there anything else that we need to concern ourselves with, with the s- the the site? I mean, it seems like everything that you've addressed. Um, they've, they've kind of, uh, spoken to, unless I missed something.
You have a, you should have a letter in your files, there, uh, the last letter that I wrote, uh, in which everything was addressed. I did put into the letter several, uh, recommendations for conditions. Which I think have been to put in in some form in the, um, COA, proposed COA. Uh, if I may, I have one question for Bill on that, uh, uh, traffic light, though, if I could ask. Bill, would that light be controlled in such a way that every individual who decides to cross the street can't push a button and automatically change the light to where they could go immediately, or is it going to be some sort of timed activation to where you could, the traffic would be allowed to flow for a period of time, otherwise you're going to end up, uh, having a stop every other thing on Main Street, that's not going to be beneficial to anybody.
Um, it's push-button activated, Charlie, I don't know what the timing is of the activation sequence on that.
Like, is it adjustable?
I I could look into it, I I don't know, but I would almost think that it it could be made adjustable. Electronically nowadays.
Yeah, to it to interrupt, not, or not to interrupt, I did read the specs on it, and and it is infinitely adjustable via, um, the internet. So it it could be, it could be fine-tuned if we see that stats to become a problem or, uh, whatnot. It it, there's a ton of adjustments based on the reading that I did on it.
That's the only question I had, Mr. Chairman, otherwise than that, um, my concerns have been satisfied.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to to weigh in on on the project before we, uh?
Yeah, two, a question, sort of comment. Um, first, thank, thank you, Mr. Madden and Mr. Warren for the, the mitigation plan. Um, so my first question is, is, uh, to the applicant and to Aaron. So, uh, will, uh, will add this mitigation plan to the COA, I think. Aaron, I I mentioned that earlier to Aaron's draft, and he sent something out that I haven't had a chance to read. Uh, that would be okay, Mr. Madden, if we put some language in the COA, uh, about the mitigation plan?
Yeah, I think it was there, at least the last version that I read, read, but, uh, no objection on our part.
Yeah, I I added, I added that last, uh, note, noting the the, uh, traffic mitigation plan and the conditions, and like Charlie said, I, Charlie's letter, um, they're in there in some form or way, if there's any, you know, tweaks or something, I can, you know, tweak it after, you know, after the vote's done, if any of the conditions or anything simple, but it's, the, uh, decision is is good, I would say it's good to go with minor tweaks, but I would, you know, recommend that you take a vote on project.
Thank you, and then I just wanted to make one last comment. Uh, uh, Mr. King, uh, spoke to the, uh, traffic impact being generated by the, um, by the the restaurant, um, uh, what do you call them, patrons? Uh, my, uh, and I probably was never very clear, my concern wasn't so much about the additional traffic they were going to generate, it was having them be able to get out of the street at that intersection during periods of peak traffic on Main Street, that that was really my concern. Um, but I I understand, we've discussed it to death, I'm not going to bring it up again. But, uh, that's something we should probably just monitor if if it if it gets to be a problem getting out of that intersection uh, during peak hours, I don't know what we can do, but that that was my real concern.
Um, it it's my understanding, Carl, um, that there's talks about removing that bump out that's there, right there by the the end of the road?
Yeah, that would make things infinitely better.
Right, yeah, I I think that, I think that's, those discussions have already been taken place from from what I've heard.
Right, so it I I wasn't, I wasn't trying to raise another objection, I really hope we can get through this and get this built.
Yeah, no, I I I agree, and and I think the removing the bump out and and kind of change in the configuration of the end of the road will make a big difference as far as the ease of getting in and out of that road off of Main Street. Uh, any other board members want to weigh in?
Yes, Mike, I have two, two comments, really. Uh, bump out removal is one thing I wanted to mention, I think that would help a lot. Uh, the second thing is, is there enough room, Bill, to have a right turn only lane? I think that would help a little bit. I know it's not, probably not your decision, Mr. Menard would have to weigh in, but I think that may help, it's a small thing, painting lines if there's enough room.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for for that, um, Sam, but, you know, certainly if it's a, if it's an option, it's available to be implemented, um, it's, it would be worth looking into.
I'd appreciate, I think it would help, and I'm, I'm all for this program, I, I think it's a hundred percent go. Wanted you to think about that, maybe talk to Menard, Mr. Menard.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it, Mike.
Mike, you're muted, just, you know, Mr. Chairman.
Did you mute me?
I did not.
Mike, do you have, uh, anything to to add?
No, I think the traffic mitigation will work quite well. Uh, summer traffic is, as summer traffic is, you know, when you live in a summer community, that's what happens, you learn how to deal with it.
Hopefully, uh, No, well, hopefully, if 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 they do remove that bump out and make getting into that road a little simpler from Main Street heading toward the Cape, it'll coerce some, uh, more patrons to, uh, to to go visit the restaurant and have lunch.
Oh, hey, the the black bag has survived, uh, VeriLife people, and I'm sure the restaurant will survive also.
Okay, um, any more input from the board before, it looks like we, uh, this will be our last, uh, possible public hearing, so I open it up to the public?
I think we closed the public hearing at the last meeting, didn't we?
I don't remember that, the only reason that I'm, that I'm confused on that point is, is the agenda says additional continued public hearings.
Hang on, let me look at my note.
While they're doing that, Mike, just a reminder that this is one that Jane can vote on because it's a site plan special permit.
I I I stand corrected, I don't see in my notes that we closed the public hearing, I apologize.
No worries, um, so, uh, is there any input from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on site plan review thirty-nine dash twenty-one, fifty-nine Main Street.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There you go.
Was that you, Mike?
Yeah, that was me.
Good, bless you. Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Baptiste, uh, Mr. Baptiste. Hmm, I'm not hearing you, you, are you muted?
No, who who are you talking to, me?
Yes.
What are you, what are you, what are you looking for now?
A vote to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Ms. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye five zero zero. Uh, having closed the public hearing, I would entertain a vote to either deny or approve site plan review thirty-nine dash twenty-one, fifty-nine Main Street.
Mr. King, could you have, uh, Aaron read the, uh, development section from his draft COA with the conditions?
That would, that sounds good, could you do that for us, Aaron?
Wha- what do, what do you want me to read exactly?
Well, you don't have, I I wasn't going to read the whole COA, but I just thought, read the conditions.
Okay, um, there's a bunch, but I can try to get through them as fast as possible, um.
Well, I think for the record, so we all know what we're sort of voting on.
Right, okay, well, all right, there's nineteen of them, so I'll just start. Condition number one is, they propose six-five-hundred-square-foot restaurant with a twenty-five foot by sixty-five-foot deck, a twenty-six-point-five, five-forty-four-foot open pavilion, a twelve-hundred-square-foot commercial slash retail space. And a tenant's utilities, parking facility, pedestrian and vehicular circulation, site landscaping is to be constructed for the site plans titled Site Development Plan Fifty-Nine Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts, prepared for Warren Q O B Z LLC by GAF Engineering of Two Sixty-Six Main Street, Wareham, MA, oh-two-five-seven-one. Date November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, with later decision date of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Condition number two is, the product shall comply with all requirements necessary for obtaining road, opening permits for driveways and utilities per standards of the Municipal Maintenance Director. Number three is, the planning board and its staff shall have access to the project site to ensure that these conditions are complied with. Number four is, any plan revision shall be submitted to and to and approved by the planning board, and construction shall conform to those final plans so approved, the planning board reserves the right to approve without the need for a new notice public hearing, any minor modifications. Number five is, during construction, debris shall be removed and disposed, a properly portable toilet shall be provided, and work shall be performed between the hours of seven AM to five PM, and no work shall be done on Sundays or holidays unless approved by the building inspector. Noer stumps or other de- debris shall be disposed, uh, on-site. Number six is, applicants shall comply with all bylaws of the town of Wareham and the approvals and conditions of all town boards and commissions and the water district. Number seven is, changes in sewage flow and consequent changes in wastewater disposal required by the wastewater treatment facility must be submitted for consideration for site plan modification. Number eight is, inspection shall be required for all site work, as noted on the approved plans and the road opening and closing, adequate notice and no case less than twenty-four hours shall be given to the planning board or is designated to make inspections of the work. A schedule of inspections shall be agreed upon, the petitioner, the petitioners contractor, and the planning board or is designated prior to the commencement of any work on the site, including the clearing of trees. Number nine is, inspections of site construction should be included but not limited, not be limited to the following. A, after limits of work and the hay bale line have been set before site clearing commences. B, after clearing is complete and higher groundwater elevations have been confirmed. and higher groundwater elevations have been confirmed. C, after storm drainage facilities are installed but prior to backfilling. D, the gravel base shown on the pavement cross-section shall be fine graded and compacted to a point eight inch below finished grade prior to placing the four inches of dense grade base material. E, after binder course of paving has been placed and before wearing surface is applied. F, paving of the wearing surface should include a complete cleaning and sweeping of the binder surface within complete tack coat of asphalt emulsion is applied to the binder surface by tack equipment. Hand application of emulsion will not be allowed except at joints where all the new pavements are but G, after final stripping of the wearing surface and after landscaping has been completed, along with loam seeding of all the served surfaces. Number ten is, no occupancy permit shall be granted until a final psych inspection has been made with a report to the planning board and directive of inspectional services that all work has been completed in accordance with the approved plan and special permit. Eleven, if an occupancy permit is requested prior to the completion of all site work, the planning board may allow that if proper security is posted in an amount and form satisfactory to the planning board. Twelve, the planning board designated will witness the found design of the storm art system, including ground ground water elevations with test bits prior to determine that proper separation from ground level groundwater levels is achieved. Thirteen, the landscaping plantings will be maintained for two years in accordance with section ten-seventy-one of zoning bylaws. Fourteen, lighting will be limited to onsite directed shielded fixtures. Fifteen, upon completion and as built plan is to be submitted to the building department with a copy provided to the planning board. Sixteen, um, a substantial use or construction permitted by the site plan review special permit has not commenced within two years from the date which copy of decision is filed with the town clerk, excluding the amount of time required for an appeal period to expire and the amount of time required to pursue and await the determination of any such appeal, then this site plan review special permit shall expire. And so far as the foregoing statement is modified by chapter one ninety-five of the Acts of nineteen eighty-four. Any person exercising rights under duly appealed special permit does so at the risk that a court may reverse the permit and any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone. Any person agree, number seventeen is, any person agreed by the decision of the planning board may file an appeal pursuant to the provisions of M G L Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen, within twenty days of the filing of this decision in the office of town clerk. No appeal is taken within the allotted time. The clerk may so click certify. Uh, number eighteen is, for this decision to become effective, a copy of said decision and notice thereof must be filed at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and must bear the certification of the town clerk that twenty days uh has left and no appeals have been filed, or that if such a appeal has been filed that it has been dismissed or denied. A certified copy of said recording must be there after filed with the board. The final one is, the proposed traffic mitigation improvements are to be constructed and implemented for the traffic mitigation plan, Wareham Village Streetscape Phase Two, dated August fifteen, twenty thirteen, prepared by G F Engineering of Two-Sixty-Six Main Street, Wareham, Mass, oh-two-five-seven-one. And I'll be taking a break for a while now.
Thank you. No, I think it's good that we all understand what we're voting on.
Okay, so having listened to Aaron, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, not approve, or deny the site plan review fifty-nine Main Street listed as thirty-nine dash twenty-one on tonight's agenda.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Baptiste. Uh, Mr. Baptiste?
Hi.
Mr. Schultz?
I.
Ms. Gleason?
Hi.
Mr. Corbett?
Hi.
And the chair votes I five zero zero. Motion.
This is Danny Warren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. We look forward to seeing the project come to life. It's gonna be exciting to to see downtown.
Thanks all very much for your time. Much appreciated.
Good night, Bill.
Night, Bill.
Night.
Thank you.
So looking at forty-eight. So we, of the three we have left, i- it looks like we we've got the same, the same issue where we're kind of running up against a deadline for to render a decision. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, it is. Although this one has um a little bit more time, the last couple.
Well, I see uh Rocky Maple Lane has I missed it.
Eight, nine.
Rendered to dis- rendered, no, it says render a decision by the twenty-seventh of February.
We're talking to forty-four twenty-one, right?
Forty, twenty-one, correct.
They're all subject to uh time crunches on them.
Do we have a representative for uh forty-four dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan Rocky Maple Lane? Brett Meredith, care of Beals and Thomas, map one oh four, lots ten forty-nine A, ten forty-nine B, ten forty-nine I D, ten fifty A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Charles LaRae. I represent them.
Good evening, Mr. Reyes. Nice to meet you. And do we have some input as to what we should be looking at on this tonight?
Is Aaron gonna read his uh, his introduction?
Yeah, I can, I can go over real quickly, because I know we're running out of time here. Um, it's a three-lot subdivision, the cul-de-sac is three hundred and six, six, seven feet, um, there's private wells and sewer. Road design is slightly different than the year uh eighty make piece projects. It's a there's ten-foot uh paved travel lanes, three-foot wide grass strip on the sidewalk side, five-foot wide sidewalk on one side, a three-foot wide shoulder on side opposite of side of the sidewalk, and then it's a forty-foot right, right away rather than a fifty-foot right away. Um, the lots are, lot one is fifty-one-point-three-five acres, lot two is forty-seven-point-five-five acres, and lot three is ten-point-nine-seven acres. The plan, preliminary plan was filed on May twenty-fourth. Um. No, I saw it. The preliminary plan was filed on May third, sorry. And the date to re- render decision is February twenty-seventh. Um, this one has an approved special permit for a solar field, solar farm as well. Um, the only big difference here is that it was denied by the Conservation Commission. Um. I'm not sure there's an appeal on that, what stage is that was right now, but that that sums up that, that project.
So would I guess the question would be, is is there an appeal with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, there is. We're before D E P. right now. Uh, their standards call for a decision in six months, and I think we're about three months in.
Okay, so so this, this is similar to uh the Tohantet Pond.
There's also, there's also a civil case pending. Um, I believe as well.
What you may be seeing is the Superior Court appeal. The, the order of conditions appealed to D E P is a separate appeal to Superior Court under the local bylaw.
Oh, okay, so that's not a civil, that's still the same one you were talking about?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I was confused.
Okay, and uh Aaron, is this, this covenant is similar to the one that uh eighty make pieces putting forward?
Um, yeah, the, the covenant for this, it would be, it would be similar. I think um Mr. LaRae might have brought up um, a few meetings ago about the, in the, in the covenant, mentioned agricultural and conservation use, but you mentioned also non-residential uses be applied in the covenant language, but you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, but it would, it'd be a similar situation as the other the other projects, um, the eighty make ones that we talked about earlier in the meeting. Um, I don't know if Mr. LaRae has any comments um for, in terms of that.
Thanks. Yes, we commented on, uh, I think it's paragraph four in the covenant, there was some language that um gave us a bit of concern because it could be interpreted as saying if we wanted to amend the solar plan, we'd have to come back to amend the subdivision. Or if the landowner wanted to change his agricultural practices, he'd have to change his subdivision plan. And uh, we don't think that's an appropriate use of the subdivision covenant. So we proposing language which simply says that we won't build anything residential. So you would, you would be approving a three-lot residential subdivision with a covenant that said we can't build anything residential unless we come back to you. And whatever else would happen would be whatever the frozen zoning allowed. And if we wanted to amend the solar project in some way, we'd come back to you in your capacity as the site plan special permit authority, not, not as a subdivision amendment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see, unless I'm missing it, I don't see anything in the way of of new information that that came to us. Is, does anybody have any concerns uh about moving forward with a potential vote on this one?
Um, I have a question, Mike.
On this one and not the others.
Well.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Absolutely.
Uh, Aaron, what was the width of the proposed roadway?
Um, well, it was two ten-foot wide paved travel lanes, so it's P twenty-foot width total.
I don't think it says that.
Um, okay, I I think that's appropriate. I think anything under nine lots allows down to an eighteen-foot paved way. So that is consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations, I believe.
As we were looking that, at this as a residential minor street under the subdivision rules and regulations, which, as you know, is limited to nine or fewer dwelling units.
Yeah, so I think the width of the pavement then uh is not a concern.
Um. Mr. Schultz, you had some concern?
I, I didn't understand why we were comfortable moving forward with this one, but not the four eighty make piece ones. How is this different?
Um, well, for me, I think this one's a little bit more digestible. There wasn't a lot of of late breaking information that came in. Um, but I I am more than, more than comfortable with uh extending it and giving everybody more time to uh
I, I don't, I don't particularly need more time. I, I didn't understand. Thank you. You answered my question.
Okay. Is there anybody else uh on the board that would like to weigh in? Okay, hearing none, uh, open it up to uh the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to weigh in? Amazing. Okay.
Mike, if, if I can.
Aaron, I'm just a question.
One more question, if I can.
Um, yeah, of course.
If, if you vote on it tonight, will you have time between now and the twenty-seventh to get the um certificate of approval recorded with the town clerk?
Um, well, I think that would land on Aaron's uh shoulders. I can, I can certainly get in into town hall to uh to sign any paperwork that needs to be signed. But I guess that would be the same question for the other board members.
I, I have no problem getting into town hall.
Nor do I.
You make it.
Just, just takes a majority vote of the board in this case.
Okay. Um, again, I didn't see any hands up for the public. I didn't miss anybody, did I, Aaron?
Uh, no, I didn't see any. And if you, if you, all the four of you can make it in to sign before on before Thursday, when I leave, I will get this done, um, the C O A done with, I mean, it's basically done already. I sent it over to the applicant already. They might have sent me comments back already on the just conditions, but it's just standard conditions that we've had for other subdivisions. Uh, I don't think there's anything else, but I'll get that done if, if you, all of you can make it in to sign it before the twenty-seventh.
Well, I'll, I'll make a point of getting in tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I would entertain a vote to close the public hearing for agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Uh, Mr. Baptiste?
Hi.
Schultz?
Hi.
Mr. Corbett?
Hi.
And the chair votes I four zero one. Um, having done that, I would entertain a motion to vote to approve, not approve, or deny uh forty-four dash twenty-one Rocky Maple Lane.
Do, do we want to have Aaron read the conditions from the C O A again, or am I being overly pendentic?
Um, I, I wouldn't mind hearing them again if you've got concerns. I mean, it's
I just want to make sure I know what, I, I, I think we all need to be sure what we're voting on.
I have a time concern.
Um, hold on one sec. Sorry, I can uh pull this up. So, pardon me.
Well, Sam doesn't want to, want to spend the time. I, that's
We can't, you'll be on six.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we can go, you'll be on six o'clock.
We can't. Um, we're not gonna get through all these by six anyway, I don't think.
That's why I said, time constraint.
I mean, I, I could make a suggestion and maybe Ken might want to also say something as well, but you could, because of the time, we have fifteen minutes, um. You couldn't move to close the public hearings on the ones that are remaining. And um by that, you know, the time that we have a meeting for all these, they're all the preliminary business, um, and it'll just be up for a simple vote at that point, and you all have time to review the certificate approvals and the conditions and everything. And I mean, it shouldn't take too long in a meeting just to hold the, you know, the votes for these without all this kind of process for now that everyone understands, you know, the zoning freeze and what's going on, and we'll have a chance to look at their conditions of the approval and things like that, but I would defer to Ken thinks about that.
Aaron, you having said that, why wouldn't we do that for forty-four dash twenty-one then?
Well, I, I think that um you kind of mentioned there wasn't anything late going on with this one. Um, I don't, I don't know if
Like, I'm, I'm comfortable taking a vote, but I, I don't want to speak for the other board members.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, that I sent out the, I think the conditions are standard. We've used them on uh, on others, other subdivisions. It's kind of something that was kind of workshop in these meetings even having with terms of conditions. I think they're fine. I think Ken reviewed them. He, he thinks they're, he thinks they're okay as well, so I, I would recommend you vote on it, but if, if it's the, if it's too much reservation, you could also do what I suggested, but I'll defer to what Ken thinks about that.
That sounds fine to me.
I'm sorry, Ken.
I was just gonna say that we can, we can postpone decisions if you want, or we can take the decision now. It's, it's gonna be a process where you're gonna have to take a vote at some point anyway, and depending on how comfortable you feel with a vote is, you can make the choice.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with the conditions on this one. There's uh, one of the other ones I'm not okay with.
Um, all right, so again, I'll put it out there, uh, entertain a motion to vote on forty-four dash twenty-one to approve, not approve, or deny uh the definitive subdivision on Rocky Maple Lane.
Uh, I move that we approve uh forty-four twenty-one uh Rocky, uh, I don't have the eye, flip the page.
Yeah, Rocky Maple Lane.
Yes, Rocky Maple Lane.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, the motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett, who take a vote. Uh, Mr. Baptiste?
Hi.
Mr. Schultz?
Hi.
Mr. Corbett?
Hi.
And the chair votes I four zero one to approve. Uh. Next stop, forty-seven dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan, ninety-one and one oh one Farring Hill Road, Wareham, Mass. Three LLC care of Atlantic Design Engineers Incorporated, map ninety-one seventy-four, lots one thousand and one zero 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 seven. I think that's supposed to be one thousand seven, uh, two-lot subdivision. Um. Do we have a representative for the applicant?
We do, Mr. Chairman, Joe Shanahan, on behalf of Wareham, M A, three LLC, if I may. Uh, I sympathize and empathize with the chair when he said he didn't like being presented with eleven-hour, eleventh-hour decisions to be made. Uh, I think you understand why I don't appreciate having the fifty-ninth minute of the hour this evening, so I'll be very quick, if I may. Uh, what I would request is for us to kind of break out of the pact that you've already discussed tonight is I would ask that Is I would ask that you extend your date for recording a decision on this for forty-five days. Rather than the thirty, which would bring you out to April eighth, giving you plenty of time. And rather than continuing your decision on this to March fourteenth, continue it out for thirty-four days to March twenty-eighth. And that should give you ample time to get a number of these projects uh, resolved and then come to me. Uh, the one thing I wanna make clear, and I'll do it very quickly, is uh, I'm not trying to jam anything down the board's throat here. I'm here because the town asked me to be here. Uh, I submitted a definitive subdivision plan that complied with all of the subdivision rules and regulations, including the construction of the subdivision way. When we had a site visit with Mr. Buckland and members of the board a number of months ago, I was asked if I would consider. Not building the subdivision way and instead just doing an eighteen foot gravel access road to the solar, solar project. So I agreed to that, and we came back and revised our plans. So I'm here this evening to ask for a waiver of construction. And entering upon the covenant. But I don't want the board to be in a position where they think, well, we're not gonna do that, so we have to vote down the definitive plan. I would do the definitive plan and build the public way to town specifications, but for the town's request that I not do that. So I, I'd just like the board to be aware of that before we go off for a number of weeks to consider this. The members of the planning board felt that it was nonsensical for us to build a twenty foot. By fifty foot paved way with a hundred foot cul-de-sac to serve access to the solar project. So we took that off our definitive plan. So the matter before you is whether you would consider waiving the actual construction. And I entering upon the covenant, or in the alternative, we'll go back to the original definitive subdivision plan, which we submitted. And we'd agree to build the subdivision way to your town specifications. And you don't have to spend a lot of time on it tonight, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, having heard the applicant's request for an extension, uh. I think, to be honest, I think it makes sense of, you know, out of all the, all the projects that we have before us, I think this one has. It has the most impact um, on residents. It definitely generates the most uh, emotion among the, the, the abutters. And I think to have it, as, to use your words, break out of the pack, makes a lot of sense to me.
That's in fairness to the board and to the public, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is there any input uh, from board members on this subject?
Mr. Chairman, I support uh, the applicant's recommendation uh, through you to the applicant. When we do come back, the only uh, question I will have is the uh, the stormwater management waiver that you were. Uh, oh, excuse me, the catch basin waiver, uh, and I'm not gonna discuss it now, but uh, we'll have the benefit of the hydrogeologist study at that point. And we'll be better able to discuss that, that item.
I agree with Mr. Schultz. Thank you.
Good point.
I agree as well, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
You said, I agree as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, having heard the input from the board, I would entertain a motion to. Grant the applicant's request uh, for a extension of forty-five days. And to have this matter placed on the planning board's agenda for the meeting of March twenty-eight.
Pro moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Uh. Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Aaron will need to do, to do his thing with the clerk.
Yes, I will do that.
Aaron, you got a lot of work on your, on your desk.
No, this is everyday business. Don't worry. It's all good.
Uh. Gender item number nine, forty-eight dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan. For thirty-six forty-four forty-eight North Carver Road, LSC Hydra LLC care of GAF Engineering. Map one oh four lots ten forty-six VB and VC three lot subdivision. Do we have a representative for the applicant?
Good, good evening, Mr. Chair. It's Greg Sampson with Wumblebond. I'm here on behalf of LSC Hydra LLC.
Okay, thank you. Um. If I'm not mistaken, just wanna look at this real quick.
Uh, I'll just note while you're looking, Mr. Chairman, real quick, uh, the design of the road and the. All those things, it's, you know, it's different, but it complies with the uh. Subdivision rules and regulations besides the, the um, waiver I included for the shoulders. Uh, the only big difference here is that the date to render, render decision is February twenty-eighth, which is one day after February twenty-seventh, which was some of them. And as you all know, there is a uh, special permit in progress. For LS, for this um, same area, LSC Hydra. Um, and they're also, they, this was, I, this was made before they got the approval from Conservation, but they got their approval from Conservation for the, for the uh, solar farm. As well, so that's the, the biggest difference here. Um, but I'm sure you guys are aware of that, because you're working on that project right now.
Right. It, 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 if I'm not mistaken, uh, this is the project where they made some considerable considerations on the size of the array in order to comply with conservation?
Yeah, this, this is the one.
Yeah.
And we're waiting, mostly we're waiting for a uh, a screening planting plan. Uh, that's, I think, what the big open item on the site plan was.
Yeah, it, it got submitted uh, today. It's posted on with the um, with the project. I might have forwarded to you guys an email. I should have, if I didn't, I'll do it tomorrow, but it is posted with the project. It just came in today, so you can check that out um, before the, you know, next hearing, but yeah.
Say, I'm, I'm on the project. I don't, I don't see it as part of the documents.
I mean, you're probably, if you look under thirty-one dash twenty-one, under the special permit for the site interview, it won't be under the definitive. It'll be under the one for thirty-one dash twenty-one.
Yep, okay, there it is.
Mr. Chairman, I just, to add the um, we have reviewed, you know, the, the applicant on this one is also found with the covenant and the certificate of approval that was. Drafted, um, so all of this, the same kind of stipulations that were involved in the earlier projects we discussed are all applicable here as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Charlie, if I remember correctly, you had some concerns about the uh, the calculations for the decommissioning on this one?
That was, that was on the site plan review. Yeah, they had to submit a decommissioning.
Yeah, but I, I think you're up against it in terms of time for the subdivision, so um, if, if the continuation for the site plan is till the next meeting. I'd recommend you take action on your subdivision and get that out of the way.
Yep, okay. All right, um. Uh, I would open it up, uh, if there's no other input from the board, I'd open it up to the public for comment. Okay, having heard none or seen none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for forty-eight dash twenty-one definitive subdivision plan North Carver Road.
So moved.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. Schultz. Uh, Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four zero one. Um, with the public hearing closed. I would entertain a motion to approve, not approve, or deny the definitive subdivision plan forty-eight dash twenty-one North Carver Road.
Uh, I move that we approve um, the definitive subdivision plan for thirty-six forty-four forty-eight North Carver Road. Uh, project number forty-eight twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Corbett. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four zero one, uh, subdivision plan for North Carver Road approved. Um.
Thank you all.
I, I, I would like to say the, the, the folks doing uh, the subdivision plan on North Carver Road, you, you guys were, were really. A pleasure to work with on this. You know, you did a lot of, a lot of work to make it, to make everybody happy. Um, so I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Forget Aaron has to get this in by Thursday.
By Thursday, yeah. Well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make sure I'm in town, town hall tomorrow to sign what Aaron needs me to sign.
Yes, I will make sure this is all done in by Thursday.
Okay, very good. Um. We are up against the six uh, six o'clock hot stop. Does that leave us in a, in any kind of a bind, uh, Aaron, as far as the zoning bylaws?
Um, I don't, Ken, is that at all? I mean, do we have to just motion adjourn now and end the meeting?
I, I think we uh, follow the predetermined timeframe and say close now. We can talk about the zoning next meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion be adjourned.
Second. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?